Rob, do you want to take the rest?
I do, yes. Now, we have a lot to cover, board members. It's good to see you all. I'm just going to double check with Communications, I think Carolyn may be on this call, to see whether I am pulling up the deck, or are you all pulling up the deck that we'll be going through today?
I will be pulling it up momentarily.
Okay, very good. So as Randy pulls that up, board members, originally, in our annual plan, we had the updates today not mushed together in one really long work session. We actually have these spaced out a little bit better, so I apologize. There's a lot of content, a lot of information that I want to update you on, update our public on in regards to the progress we've made with our strategic plan, in spite of the challenges. You know, in March, as everybody knows, our world was turned upside down. And I'm just really proud of our team for continuing to work focusing on those things that not only that we feel are important, but our community told us were important as we developed this plan. And so as we, as we talk today, you should be getting updates on all six of the strategic initiatives that are underway. As a reminder, our plan is all together for all students. And this plan is designed to make sure that we are able to accomplish these three long-term student outcomes. That we want to make sure that all of our students benefit from challenging and relevant educational opportunities. We want to ignite their learning. We want to equip all of our students and our educators and our parents so we're able to reduce disparities in achievement. And our hope is that every student that graduates from BVSD is empowered with the skills necessary for them to be successful after they graduate. And that includes college and career, and also whatever it is that they endeavor to do, in addition to a set of skills that are beyond our curriculum that we've been calling essential skills. I know we're working on a new name, that will really prepare them for success in the world that they'll be entering. So, you know, board members, as we think about the theme that I really think runs through our strategic plan, you know, our tagline has always been excellence in equity. But I will tell you, this plan is designed to make sure that equity is at the center of what we do. Because, and I've shared this with our team, and I've shared this at some of our equity summits that we held last year, you can't have excellence without equity. And we can't have so much students achieving and then disparities in achievement in other groups of students. That is, that is not okay. We can't be the best school district in the country if we're not providing all kids a world-class education and opportunities. So you will see as we talk today that there is a definite focus on equity within the strategic initiatives that we're working on. And you should, you should see that through our work. We know through the feedback that we collected from our community last year that equity is an important value. And, you know, as we think about that, I don't think that that's something new. That I think equity has been a value in this community for a very, very, very long time. However, when you look at some of the results that we've had over time, it wouldn't reflect on what we've cared about, the actuality that we have some pretty significant disparities in, in what it is that, in many of our outcomes. And it's not because we don't have great teachers, right? We have great teachers. And we have invested a lot of money in this, these ideas of equity. All right, but, but, you know, as we've shared before, and we've shared as we rolled out our strategic plan, huge gaps amongst the biggest in Colorado, and Colorado is some of the biggest gaps in the country. And so certainly a daunting challenge, which is really why it's critical that we think about a thoughtful strategic plan to make sure that, that we are making the changes that we need to make in our system to get outcomes that we hope. Right? You know, our approach, and I've shared this with you all before, data-driven, research-based, feedback-focused. When you triangulate all those pieces of data, what the research would tell you would work, what the data tell you what is and isn't working, and what your, what your community, what your teachers, what your kids are sharing with you to provide the context, it's, it's the triangulation of those three pieces of information that this, this plan is based on. So we have four updates, four categories of updates for you today that are going to cross over six of our strategic initiatives. Tools for our teachers, we'll talk about Strategic Initiative 1A, 1B, 6A. And those talk about our instructional model, the prioritization of standards, and cultural relevance. One-size-fits-all is a new topic for the board. We haven't discussed this much this year. We've been working with staff on this. I mean, it's really, how do we create systems that provide clear expectations and clarity without trying to treat everybody the same? We'll be talking about 3C, which is academic return on investment, and just a little more detail on how we're using this tool to find more of what works, and having the conversations when we see things aren't, aren't working, and how that we can make those decisions. And then finally, we know as a school district, we can't do this alone, that we have to have partners. And we will provide you a partnership update as well. So lots of slides. I hope to move this fairly quick, through this fairly quickly. But certainly want to pause as we're going. If you have any questions, we're here to answer. But at this point, I'm going to turn this over back to our team and to start with tools for our teachers.
Thanks for the introduction, Dr. Anderson. I think you set this up really well. Board members, it's my honor to give you an update on behalf of the 1A, 1B, and 6A strategic initiative teams on the tools for teachers that make up our instructional infrastructure in BVSD. We have without a doubt one of the most highly skilled and talented teacher workforces in the nation. What our data tell us, however, is that having great teachers is not enough. We need to support our teachers with the tools and the systems that give them the clarity, support, and the opportunity to collaborate with peers around the construction and use of common resources. While we stand proud of the high quality of instructional experiences we see in many of our classrooms, we know that there's room for improvement and that we have work to do if we're going to guarantee that every student has access to high-quality learning experiences that are consistent across classrooms and schools. Just as every student deserves to have access to the tools and guidance that they need in order to learn, our teachers deserve to have access to the tools they need, crystal clarity about expectations and support to collaborate around the use of common resources. In order to demonstrate how our current reality can lead to well-intentioned but inequitable experiences, let's consider the following scenario. Imagine three of our most outstanding educators, teachers who've been recognized for their individually outstanding practices. They each teach 7th grade health, and they work at three different middle schools in our district. While they all use the BVSD Curriculum Essentials document for 7th grade health to plan their instruction, they all interpret it differently. Teacher B has reviewed the Curriculum Essentials document and seen that it calls for students to be able to demonstrate the ability to make healthy food choices in a variety of settings. She's excited to help students learn this important skill and has invested a huge amount of time developing an eight-week unit that allows students to explore their current food choices in different settings and create personalized plans for incorporating healthy choices. This is one of her favorite units, and she consistently gets feedback from students and parents that they love it as well. The unit culminates at a field trip to Whole Foods that is a highlight for many students. While there are many celebrations in this experience, there are also some unintended consequences. Because of the decision to go deep on the topic of nutrition, the students in this teacher's class only get one lesson on how to reduce and manage emotional stress. Because of the decision to use a unit that she gathered the resources for five years ago, the teacher misses the opportunity to engage students by using a more recent article on how sugar consumption may increase the risk of anxiety and depression. Because of the decision to focus the culminating event on a trip to Whole Foods, some students may not see this activity as immediately applicable to their lives, perhaps leading to the erroneous belief that one can only make healthy food choices if they shop at Whole Foods. Again, these unintended consequences are not because the students lack access to a great teacher. This is an outstanding teacher, but the district has failed to provide this teacher with the tools, clarity, and support to collaborate around the use of common resources. Another unintended consequence is that the actual experience of students enrolled in 7th grade health varies dramatically across the district. As a result, students go on to high school with different gaps in their knowledge and skills based on the decisions made by individual teachers working in isolation. By prioritizing the learning outcomes and establishing a scope of work through the year, students will have more equitable access to content regardless of the school they attend, limiting the unintended consequences and maximizing the capacity of our great educators. Imagine that we have a system that supports our teachers with the tools, clarity, and opportunity to collaborate so they can focus on building relationships, creating an inclusive classroom, and offering challenging and relevant opportunities for all students. In this desired state, the same teacher from the previous example would have greater clarity around what students need to know, understand, and be able to do before they finish 7th grade. She would have access to up-to-date resources and be using the same instructional model as her colleagues in order to facilitate stronger collaboration. Finally, she would have support in culturally responsive practices to ensure that the learning and experiences meet the diverse strengths and needs of her students. Our teams have led an extraordinary effort this past year to build the foundation for the systems that will enable this desired state. The development of our instructional infrastructure has been shaped through a collaborative process involving a large number of stakeholders, including 368 teachers representing all of our BVSD schools. It also included 27 school leaders who will play a critical role in leading the implementation at their buildings, and 19 network support staff who did the heavy lifting of organizing, facilitating, and synthesizing input. A point of pride in these efforts has been the involvement of hundreds of community members whose voices helped to shape these core instructional systems. And here's the result of those efforts. The new instructional system starts with our culturally responsive framework that serves as the cornerstone for all of our work. The core principles of our culturally responsive framework are articulated in the outer circle of this graphic, with culturally responsive teaching pedagogy called out as one of those core principles that is supported by an unwavering central office commitment, robust student academic growth opportunities and achievement, and relevant curriculum instruction and assessment. This lens has been critical in shaping the other parts of the instructional framework. The second pillar of our instructional infrastructure is a common scope and sequence, which begins with prioritizing standards. As you may recall, this slide was shown to the board in August as we began our work of standards prioritization. In the past, we asked our grade four teachers to cover 174 evidence outcomes in a year without a lot of support about how and when to do that. Through the work of standards prioritization, our educators were able to narrow down this list, determining which standards to cover in depth and which standards support students in order to understand concepts more deeply. Using a common set of criteria, relevance, leverage, and continuity, our PK-12 educators have completed their standards prioritization work, prioritizing roughly 30 to 50% of grade-level standards, with 73 evidence outcomes now prioritized at grade four rather than 174. The third pillar of the instructional infrastructure is a common instructional model that has been developed in collaboration with representatives from all of our schools. This instructional model outlines the five key phases of teaching and learning, with best practices within each phase. All instructional units should begin with intentional activities to engage students' interests based on their strengths and experiences. Next is setting goals, which involves ensuring that students understand and take ownership of learning outcomes for the unit. Then comes guiding new learning, followed by reinforcing and reflecting on the learning with feedback as part of that reflection. Finally, students have an opportunity to demonstrate their learning. All three of these components come together in our new common template for instructional planning, which has also been informed by our teams working on balanced assessment and a tiered system of supports. This template guides educators through a common process of planning instruction that weaves together these different components of our instructional infrastructure. Stage one of the template digs deep into setting the learning outcomes aligned to our prioritized standards. Stage two focuses on how we will know whether students have learned the intended outcomes. And stage three outlines the learning activities that students will engage in as they work towards mastery of the intended outcomes, with specificity around the timing and sequencing of activities. To many people, this general planning structure is probably very familiar as it follows what is known as a backwards design process. In addition to creating this template, teams will be developing 27 actual units this summer as resources for teachers to use next year. Given the current crisis of the COVID-19 pandemic, people may ask why we're continuing to push forward on these strategic initiatives right now. The reality is that it's more important now than ever as we prepare to support teachers with different phases of reintroduction in the next school year. The systems and structures we are creating will help to ensure an equitable learning experience for all students, no matter what phase of introduction we are in. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I just noticed a suggestion from Kitty that maybe if there's a sort of a written script that could be sent out to board members to refer to, that might be helpful. I can't see anyone in the gallery, so I'll just go in sort of an alphabetical order. Richard, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I would like to review this again, you know, when we can get the whole explanation of it, because I only got bits and pieces. I know that you're struggling with your internet connection, Sam, but right now I don't have questions.
Okay, Lisa?
No, I don't have any questions. I will say for anyone who doesn't know that there was some sort of large hack yesterday for Comcast and T-Mobile, so this may be an ongoing problem for us for all, all five hours of our day. I was struggling yesterday a lot as well. But yeah, I think Kitty's suggestion is great. If we could read along, that would, that would work.
Would it work, board members, if we did a voiceover video and then sent that out to you later today?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do that, Randy, Sam? Does that work?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. There's also a script embedded in the actual slide deck in the notes. So if we share that version of the slide deck with board members, they can see the entire script.
That's great too, because Donna and Kathy weren't able to join us, so keep us off. So should we move on to the next piece? Yeah?
Before we move on, board members, I just want to, hold on one second, sorry. I still have my video. I want to reiterate the importance of this work. When I look at our district, which is an incredible, incredible school district, I would say the biggest weakness that I saw when I got here and can see, and why this is so critical, is our instructional infrastructure. Right? It's that, it's this idea of common expectations, the common supports, the resources that teachers need so we can have consistency in instruction. And when you're talking about closing achievement gaps, right, and closing growth gaps, it is, it is a critical component before you can even start to work to make sure that you have the right set of expectations, right? Because then you could work on coaching our incredible teachers, working on supports. You know, it's hard to have a multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS, which I know is in the success effect, that doesn't connect to the standards that you're expecting everyone to learn. Right? And so as we, as we think about this initiative, 1A, 1B, and 6A, I will tell you, they are critical components of our work in regards to closing the achievement gap. Our team has done incredible work. This is hard, hard work because when you engage over 400 people in developing not only prioritization of standards, but starting to develop the unit plans we'll be developing, I just want, I don't want this presentation to go without that being said, how proud I am and how important this is and how convinced I am. And the research will tell you, this is a crucial component to our success. And it is something that our district has not had. And so, you know, I'm constantly asking myself the question, if we want to get different outcomes, what do we need to be doing differently? This is a significant change in practice, and I'm convinced and research would lead you to believe will help us as we start to try to close the achievement gaps. So, sorry about that plug, Tina, but I wanted to just make sure that I added that before we move forward.
Yeah.
Tina, Tina, I have a comment and a question probably at the same time here. The, on the slide deck, you presented the 7th grade, I believe it was, the health unit. And during that presentation, you also talked about culturally responsive as one of the areas that, or strategies that teachers will be getting support with. The, you know, when I, when I look at the achievement gap, and I know who the gap kids are, and many of the gap kids come from other backgrounds. You know, a lot of them are Latino kids, free and reduced lunch kids, et cetera. Then when I look at culturally responsive, and I know you gave one example, Sam, in terms of what that would look like. But at some point, I think I would like to see a more in-depth explanation of what that culturally responsive strategy and how that would work with our teachers.
Um, yeah, that's, that's, that's a great question, Richard, and I'm so glad you asked that. So we've got teams that are working on taking that unit template that I shared with you all and building out full, complete units. They're working on that right now. And in each stage of the template, there are guiding questions that ask them to look at that part of the unit planning through a culturally responsive lens. So when they're focused on, for example, identifying what the standards are, we give them some reflective questions about, you know, are there going to be opportunities for students to question, challenge, critique, expand on the way that dominant culture has portrayed a particular set of knowledge?
Okay. Any other follow-up questions on that?
Did we lose her, or did she finish her explanation?
I, I, I can, I can give you more of an explanation if you want. You know, as you go on, I think the, at the next...
That time I think she cut out.
I think we can go on.
Okay.
Point, well, point well made, Richard. We'll make sure that we can provide you more concrete examples so you understand how, how this framework is actually resulting in more culturally responsive and relevant lessons for kids. I think that's what you're asking for. Am I right on that?
Yeah, yeah, and I also want to send a urge of, we're not a urge, but a cautionary point here in terms of the culturally responsive so that we don't perpetuate stereotypes, et cetera. You know, because when I was looking at the health unit, and I was looking at learning how the lives of people work and stuff like that, that could be potentially stereotypical, if you get what I'm saying.
I do. I absolutely do. I think that's a point well, well made. And we look forward to updating you all, hopefully, on, on this topic in the fall as well so you can begin to see some of the lessons and start to see how some of the work is changing practices in our buildings.
Okay.
All right, this is our second topic, and I believe Robin Fernandez will be reviewing this with you all. Board members, just as a quick introduction, one of the other findings, I think, through my 100-day first entry, 100-day entry plan, and as we went through the deep community engagement around strategic planning, is that in many ways, we've been treating all schools the same. And, and I'm convinced that won't work. Our schools and communities are too different. And so this is an effort, a strategic effort, on how we can begin to set clear expectations but also create a range of options that work better for schools. That is a balance, as opposed to being fully site-based or fully centrally managed. You know, centrally managed being we tell every school what to do, and they take all their direction from the central district. And site-based being schools get to do whatever it is that they want to do. There's a lot of space in the middle of that. And this initiative, and as we work with our school leaders, will hopefully define how it is we want to tackle. What I think is also another issue in our district, which is, when you're fully site-based, you don't fully understand the consequences of that until you look at things, you know, at a large scale, like district-wide community, or district-wide achievement gaps. So Robin, I'll let you take it over from there.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So, good afternoon, President Mark Whiz, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. So I'm excited to share information with you about this tiered system of supports and accountability for schools. This is what we had previously referred to as Strategic Initiative 3A. So we have been working all year on the development of this system that supports all students in all communities, and we're proud to let you know about these collaborative efforts. The central purpose of this initiative is to provide the proper level of support for each school, which in turn will create the conditions necessary for all students to attain the long-term outcomes that are set forth in the strategic plan. This framework helps us to understand really how we do scope and sequence, or how we do instructional model in the different contexts across BVSD, while at the same time, we're creating a guaranteed and viable educational experience for all students. And so therefore, it doesn't just leave it up to luck or chance where a child lands in which school that would determine what their experience is throughout their time in BVSD. So if you think of other initiatives, for example, the instructional model or scope and sequence as the what we are implementing in BVSD, the tiered system of supports and accountabilities really is the how we are going to do it. It brings it to the street level, if you will. It's a vehicle for implementation. So this framework of school supports and accountability is, as I said, what makes all other initiatives actionable. It allows them to have the structure through which we implement them. It enables the instructional infrastructure that is inherent in all aspects of what we talk about, about how we do school. But within this framework, we allow it to be customized and tailored to the very different and unique nature and needs of each school community. And then finally, we know that by employing best practice throughout the system, while at the same time, we are coupling that with the need for innovation, when and where appropriate, it's necessary in order to balance consistency with the need to support schools in developing and exploring innovative practices. Therefore, the focus of this framework is based on the knowledge that one size doesn't fit all. So when you look across the three tiers that are in blue on this slide, you see high support, mid-flexibility, and high flexibility. So this tiered system will define the levels of supports and accountability of schools into these three categories. So first, on the left, you see high-support schools. So these may be defined as those in need of a greater level of district support in order to implement the types of practices and instructional infrastructure necessary to support all students. So this category could include schools with perhaps low growth and low achievement. Schools who will best be able to achieve the long-term outcomes for students with a balanced level of district support and accountability could include schools with middle to high levels of achievement, but perhaps with low growth, or subgroups of students demonstrating low growth or a sizable achievement gap. The high flexibility schools could be those that demonstrate high levels of achievement and high levels of growth for their students. We need to support them, but we also need to allow them to innovate and help us by informing the rest of the system. So on the next slide, you will see in gray vertically down along the left-hand side of the framework, these are the components of systems and structures that we know provide the elements necessary for students to access, master, and integrate their learning. So when you put the horizontal row across the top and the vertical gray categories that are down along the left-hand side of these essential components together, as a whole, what it does is it creates a system that provides a guaranteed and viable educational experience for all students, while simultaneously, it provides understanding of and supporting the unique nature of each school and each community. Hence, the balance between consistency and tailoring of supports and accountabilities for each community. So the timeline that we have been involved in all year for both creating and implementing this framework began last August. And that was with the development of the skeleton of the draft language of this framework. And so what we have done is we have shared these, the draft language, as you see in each, or as you saw in each cell on the framework in the last slide. in the last slide. Each one of those cells, the draft language was shared with building leaders, principals, and assistant principals, and network leaders at monthly meetings. And so what they did is they reviewed draft language, they provided feedback on that language. We then would come back for a second feedback loop and share all of the feedback from all of their colleagues with them, at which time they would suggest revisions to that draft language. And then the language for each cell was revised when necessary. And in May, the whole framework, as it was completed, was shared with BVEA. And in June, the completed framework was then again shared with building leaders and network leaders. And so the timeline for implementation, as you see, has been a little bit revised from our original implementation plan, based on our current reality, frankly, and our need to juggle our phrasing of, of the implementation plan to address COVID reintroduction, and also really to encompass the fact that we don't have currently our traditional data sources. Things like CMAS, SAT, possibly end-of-year assessments, et cetera, that we could use as data sources to determine which category each school might function within. So as a result, what we are going to be doing moving forward is moving ahead with our University of Virginia Partner Schools, which, as we know, are Alicia Sanchez, Columbine, and now bringing on Cole Elementary, because we know that they're high-priority schools in needs of high levels of support in order to change the outcomes for students. That work is already underway and will continue in this next school year. In addition, we're exploring the idea of a few schools who feel like they could be ready to serve as early adopters. So, you know, dipping their toes into certain components of the framework that would help us learn how to work toward broader implementation of this framework in 21, 22. And finally, you can see that full implementation is planned for the 22, 23 school year. We are proud of and excited about the collaborative nature of the creation of this framework, and also about the focus on systems, structures, and practices that are going to support and allow all students to access the long-term outcomes that have been outlined in the strategic plan. We're proud of this work, and we are excited to be sharing it with you. And now I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Should we start with Lisa?
Sure. Good to see you again, Robin. I'm, I'm excited about everything you presented. I think I do have a question about, if we look at this framework, if somebody were to say, you know, it feels like our higher-performing, higher-income white schools get to have a more tailored boutique experience in their education with the, the ability to sort of change and enhance lessons, and our lower-income schools are getting more of the standardized sort of boilerplate education. How might we explain that that's not what's occurring here?
Oh, thank you for asking that question. So it is going to be interesting, frankly, as we work toward really diving into our data. And I know that Dr. Anderson may want to address this point, but how it is that we will be addressing the needs of all students. And so, Dr. Anderson?
Yeah, no, Lisa, that's a great question. I think that it, it just depends on what you, what you look at, right? So if I have a school, right, and, and I think that, you know, as, as superintendent, as, as central office administration, you have to, you have to make it clear when you lean in and when you get out of the way, right? So it, it's, it's not just on achievement. If we were just looking on achievement, general average achievement, I think what you're sharing would be certainly a consideration, right? But if we have a school that is not closing those achievement gaps, right, as we align our expectations to the metrics that we set, right, to the school improvement plans that we develop, the system should be able to identify those schools that are doing great for all kids, right? In a school that's doing great for all kids on their own, with their own plan, you know, my belief is that how do we support that to make, so they can continue to, to do great things for kids? But what we're seeing, and as we look at the data and start to, start to really dig into not just achievement, but the gaps that we're seeing at our schools, where, where there's gaps, we need to have additional supports and additional expectations, right? So I would say that, that, that you, you would reserve high flexibility for those schools in our system that are doing the very best job of closing achievement gaps, right? And so those should be things that, that we, we give them space to innovate, and we learn from and use them as points of pride. But again, it's, it's the data systems that you look at, which we have not clearly defined yet. We have just worked through the theory of what are the things that we know we're going to have to hold tighter loose, depending upon performance, the areas where we have to differentiate support. And the data points that we use certainly will engage the board in on what would, what would constitute a school being able to really say, you know what, they're really doing a great job in all aspects of what we're asking them to do. It makes sense to provide them a, a different level of flexibility, because they're meeting the outcomes we're looking for.
Thanks. And I agree that the one-size-fits-all approach doesn't work. And I also have no doubt that anything that Robin worked this hard on is probably absolutely the right thing. I'm also, so I guess I want to clarify that that wasn't intended to be presented as a criticism, but rather as an assumption about conversations, I think, that we'll hear going forward and, and hoping to understand better how I can respond to folks when I hear those things from them.
What it'll let us do is today, if you were to look at the, the, the school performance frameworks that the state rolls out, which is how we judge schools, or you go on Niche or School Digger, right, they do exactly what you're talking about, which is they don't really dig into how are schools meeting the needs of all kids. It's just a high level or an average. This will allow us to differentiate, set clear expectations for our school leaders, provide clear supports that are aligned to improvement plans that both schools and their communities are involved in. We feel like this is a much better nuanced approach. I mean, it also allows us to differentiate support and also differentiate accountability as needed.
Well, thanks so much for all the hard work.
Okay. Kitty?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank Robyn. You did a really good job on this. And thanks, Lisa, for asking that question, because now I know the answer.
Stacy?
No questions. Thank you, Robyn.
Richard?
Just, just very quickly, Robyn, thank you so much for your presentation. Aligning the same lines, I think, that Lisa was asking the question. I, I'm just curious to know, because you mentioned the three schools that are working with UAV. And I believe two of them are Title I schools. Is Cole Elementary a Title I school?
No, it is not.
And now, now, when I look at the, the demographics of these three schools, for example, I know that two of them have a critical mass of low-income Latino kids in both schools. And, and I'm looking, and my, my question would be, is do we have other schools that have a critical mass of low-income Latino students and, and are doing well?
Yes, that, yes, we do. And actually, the essence of that question is perfect, because when asking about the differences between Alicia Sanchez, Columbine, and Cole, now the beauty of the framework is what it allows us to do is be both responsive to the needs of students, regardless of who those students are, or how many of, how many students there are, who may not be demonstrating high levels of achievement and high levels of growth. They could be different demographics of students, and they could be in different numbers. And they could be in different communities, and they could be at different levels, elementary or middle level or high. But we have a responsibility to be responsive to and responsible for all students, regardless of who they happen to be. So by setting this base level of expectation, which really is founded on best practice, what we know will help all students access and integrate their learning. It allows us to provide that as a foundation, while changing our response, building upon that foundation, tailored to whatever is going on in a certain school, whatever those needs are, whatever those students need. And so thanks for pointing out the difference, because this is a framework that we are excited about using in every context, so that all students are able to really be talking about actually having access to the long-term outcomes. So, great question. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Now, at some point, are we going to have a list of schools that are high flexibility, mid flexibility, or whatever you termed it, so that we, so that we know, you know, what schools have a little bit more autonomous than others? Because I think that's what we're looking at, right? Autonomy in terms of innovations and, and what schools can do, continue doing what they're doing well for kids, because they don't have a high achievement gap, while others do have a higher achievement gap, so that we can, and I'm sure that you're going to be tracking their progress and all of that, and letting us know what, what's going on. But is there a point in time that we may be able to get that list?
Yes, of course. And, you know, this spring, in our unusual reality that we're living, we don't have those data sources in the same way we usually do in the past, whether it is CMAS or other measures that we use to inform a school rating on the school performance framework. We usually have that data. We would have that data this summer that would help inform us about students' mastery of content over the, the course of the last year. We would also have data sources like iReady and iStation. We would also have data sources like our BVSD Common Assessments. And those would be the body of evidence that we would use to really get a multi-dimensional view of what the student experience is, and where are those best practices fully in place, where are they very well-understood and very strong, and where are other places where we need to provide them support to get to that balance that you had talked about, right? The balance between innovation, autonomy, and consistency. Because we're all accountable for the long-term outcome access for all students. And so our hope is that as we work through this next school year, we will have, whether it is through a balanced assessment system, or whether it is the ability that we will have to really determine student growth and achievement through other data sources. If we have CMAS, if we have SAT, if we have Common Assessments next year, we will use those in order to help figure out which category is the proper level of support for each school. So that's a long way of saying yes.
Well, thank you, Robyn. And, and, and again, thanks for your hard work. And not being able to read that chart that you put together, because the print was, it was so small, I couldn't read anything on that. We'll be getting that, so that we can actually read it later on, right? Because I'm curious to find out if within that particular chart, there are some specific strategies for these particular columns that you call high, high flexibility, middle flexibility, or low flexibility, I can't recall, if there are specific strategies that would go along with these particular schools. I know that, for example, with Columbine, Sanchez, and Cole, we do have some specific strategies, and that's the utilization of UAV, and what they're doing for those particular three schools. Now, I'm real curious to find out where University Hill Elementary School would land, where Pioneer would land, where KC Middle School would land, where Manhattan would land, and, and Centennial. Because in these three particular middle schools, there is not so much of a critical mass of Latino students in there, but they're, they're, they're impacted by Latino students. So, you know, I'm, I'm curious to find out where they would land at.
Sure, of course.
Richard, I think that, great points. I believe that this document is posted to Board Docs, correct? Right? So, so you have access to it, and we can get to any other clarification that you need. You know, this is, again, what I'll just point you at, this point out to you, this is a very different way for BVSD to be doing business, right? You know, when you look at all of the things that we've been doing in the past, very much one-size-fits-all, right, where everybody can do what they want, or everybody has to do it a certain way. There's a lot of space in between that will allow us to create the conditions, so we don't have to answer the questions, what schools are doing the best job at closing their achievement gap. Every, everyone on this board and in our district should know that. We should be learning from that. But you've got to create the systems that create the clarity around who's doing what it is that we expect, so we can really take these things on. Rich, there will be different strategies and different supports, a lot of that, you know, led by our work with University of Virginia, who again, are, for the public who don't know, why we would go to the University of Virginia to partner is that they're experts in the country around school turnaround, and have, have just, just tons and tons of research and evidence that their practices work. So we expect those things to be working in our schools. Once some of the accountability system stuff gets up and running, I, I expect, fully expect improved outcomes. But again, just to point out to the board, to the public, these, we're talking about very different ways of doing business here in BVSD, as we start to seek the changes around equity that we're looking for.
Thank you.
Okay. And I just had a question. When there's been some conversation about weighted supports or increased supports for schools that are having a difficult time closing their gaps, will we also limit the flexibility on those funding weights, if we ever get there? Or will we do the funding weighting in a way where the site leader has the most control over that?
So really, Tina, that's a conversation yet to be had, because that is Initiative 3B. So this is 3A, and so that really is the next step in, in moving that conversation forward. So thanks for asking about that.
Okay. Great. Should we move on to the next item?
That would be wonderful. Board members, you've seen this a couple of times this year. This is more of our work around academic return on investment. Again, a very different way that we, we're going to start to think about the investments that we make. How do we continue to make sure that we're doing more of what's working, less of what isn't working? And so with that, I'm going to turn this over to, I'm not sure who's starting, whether it's Jonathan or Bill, but one of them will be starting now. Thank you.
Hi, it's Jonathan, President, President Mark Whist, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. We're happy here to be giving you a, a review of the action steps and the overarching purposes of this initiative, and, and update you on the recent actions taken. So on the next slide, we, we show what the, sorry, in the next slide, there you go. What, what our focus in this really is monitoring, assessing academic return and investment for current and future programs. The, the idea is we want to understand what's working well, so that we can do more of that, stop what's not working as, as well. And the timeline that we, we have set out for this focuses on both doing some implementation study in the current year, and updating the, the dashboard of costs, and, and doing analyses to help understand what we're, what we're, what we're doing well and what we could do better at. So on the next slide, we, we note that, that our first work here is to improve the inventory of current district programs, as shown on the next slide, that we, we gather information about the objective reach program, the students it targets, how much it costs. I mean, break that down specifically into some questions about what's ongoing and what's not, and what's in people costs, and what's in cost of materials, or service, or supplies, along with outcome measures that are related to those programs, and how those are aligned to BVSD's plan. On the next slide, you know, we would note that, that we adjusted time and cost estimates to reflect the current year. We added information for some objectives that when this, this work was initially done, weren't fully specified, perhaps, as long as they're above a certain minimum cost threshold for us to be looking at. Importantly, we took programs off the list that are no, no, no longer being offered. And on the next slide, it is an example of what this, what this work looks, looks like, right? This is focused on some of our most expensive programs, which are interventions around reading and literacy, right? And we would, and this shows as, as, as an example of breaking this out, the columns represent different kinds of costs relative to the number of students served in the previous year. And using the cost totals, you know, you can get to a cost per student. And what we would see here, right, is that some of these programs cost more like $500 a student, others cost more like $8,000. So there's a significant range in what we have. We'll, we'll get back to this cost information. in what we have. We'll, we'll get back to this cost information, but first I want to talk a little bit about next slide, which goes to implementation study and program effectiveness data. Uh, on this slide following, we measure implementation in multiple ways, right? Um, and we, we know that it takes by multiple years in an institution and educational institution for something new to be implemented. We would begin by asking survey, survey questions around beliefs and attitude. Um, maybe in the first and second years, we, we interview people about how their use is going. And only in maybe the second or third year, when we're uh, very near to, to routine implementation, would we begin observation of practice. Uh, on the next slide, um, what we see uh, is that, that, and once we do have an indication that a program is being effectively implemented, it makes sense to connect available data that we have, um, to, to the, uh, to the programs and begin to attribute some outcomes, uh, with some careful caveats about how we look at this, to the particular programs. Um, this, you know, this provides a context for any information we would provide about cost. Um, and, and, you know, we would then be informing our understanding really of how well practices worked once they've been implemented, designed. On the next slide, um, the update here, right, is that we had just started the elementary literacy materials implementation study, uh, in late February, um, and, and then once, uh, once our in-person instruction ended, uh, we, we really needed to postpone that for the remainder of the nineteen to twenty school year. Um, we, we did also, uh, drill down more on some program effectiveness data analysis, beginning with uh, our most expensive program, which is Reading Recovery, uh, also known as it, descubriendo la lectura in Spanish, when given in Spanish. So, on the next slide, uh, right, we think about, among the things we can think about in return on investment, right? Um, some, some sense of, uh, the impact of a particular program on a student. Uh, and that can be high or, or low, and places in between, obviously. Um, efficiency speaks to how many students a teacher can serve, uh, effective in the program effectively. And then cost, of course, can be a little lower high al- also, and uh, this is just an illustration of what these might be, not necessarily that uh, something that is, uh, lower in efficiency is also lowering cost, quite the contrary. Uh, so on the next slide, uh, right, what we see is that when we dig into a program very specifically, and we'll look at Re-Reading Recovery here, uh, on the, the line that says Re-Reading Recovery, and I, I ready, right, we can look at the outcomes that we get over time. Uh, and, uh, and we look at the number of students who are, uh, who are, uh, who are, who are assessed, and we ask some questions about, um, so in the year after they received a program, were they at least achieving about where they were? Um, uh, you know, prior to that, uh, this, this idea about, uh, are they, are they achieving at least at a similar, uh, group, similar percentile nationally on the assessment that we, that we, that we have. And when we see that only forty percent in this case are meeting that minimum threshold of similar, um, of, of the same, uh, um, performance. Uh, and, and only about a quarter are, uh, reaching five percentile points higher, right? Which isn't a, a huge gain, but would represent some, some gain. Uh, when we combine that information with information like, uh, forty-five, uh, forty-fifth percentile, uh, median growth percentile on I ready, we have some indication in this evidence that, that, um, outcomes aren't particularly, particularly strong in this case. You can do some comparing, comparing across programs with some really clear caveats. Different programs are really matched to different students' needs. Um, and that some of the additional work, what you're going to do in, in looking at data, uh, is going to involve, um, looking harder at match group analysis, so that we make sure we compare like-for-like students uh, as much as possible. So, on the next slide, um, we, we look at what we saw around academic return on investment for Re-Reading Recovery. It's a one-to-one program. Um, so as far as efficiency goes, it's, it's fairly low, it's about as low efficiency as you can be, right? Uh, impact, the data were not particularly strong for impact, so we generally consider this a low-impact program. Results were a little bit better in Spanish than in English. Um, but, uh, overall, the, the impact was low, and the cost is, is high, related, of course, to the, uh, efficiency question. So, um, we end up asking some questions about are outcomes sufficient relative to cost? Um, and these are hard questions to ask, because people implement programs are really doing it with their heart and soul, have great belief in the efficacy of the programs, and most programs have some impact. But the question is whether they have an impact relative to cost that matches their continuation. We saw the low growth overall, as we noted, in a match group analysis, uh, we saw really limited effectiveness uh, indication relative to not doing reading recovery. Um, and then we'd have some concerns in terms of the same analysis with intervention needs after the program. Uh, it's one thing to do it in an eight-thousand-dollar kid program, and then that mean that the student is not going to be identified for future needs, um, versus having that be uh, not an indicator of improvement. Um, and then finally, cost drives, drives this, uh, in as a more expensive program, um, it has the, um, it, it, it wasn't getting the kind of results that would be necessary to, um, to say it's effective relative to what it costs. Um, so with that, I'm turning it over to Bill Sutter.
There we go. Uh, thanks, Jonathan. Um, so this, uh, next, uh, portion of this presentation is about uh, the, the district-wide implementation of the academic return on investment. We've done a couple of presentations on this uh, in the last year or so. Uh, so, a little bit of this is review, as well as, um, what we're doing uh, in the budget development process for this coming year, uh, as well as moving forward. So, uh, academic return on investment, right, is a, um, a, a process to, uh, dig into these programs and initiatives, and really determine, uh, what, which of those, uh, do the most good, and for whom, uh, but also at what cost, right? So Jonathan pointed that out, uh, well, that certainly, um, resources are not infinite, and we need to make sure that we're getting the most results, uh, for the dollar invested. So, AROI is, um, a, a combination of all those pieces. Uh, the program implementation, the evaluation of the program, uh, the cost and the performance metrics of the students, uh, themselves. So, uh, it's, it's multi-layered, uh, it's pretty complex to get, uh, reliable, uh, information and data uh, to be able to make a determination. So, it's not necessarily, uh, or not primarily a cost-saving tool. Uh, so, um, it, it is possible to use it, uh, to go into the process of needing to make reductions, uh, and selecting out those particular programs that are, uh, maybe not as, uh, more expensive, uh, per student. But, uh, it's really, uh, something that should be done on a, a ongoing basis to make sure that, uh, we're being as efficient as possible. I, it also helps to, uh, kind of reduce the, I'll call it noise, uh, in the system of, uh, lots of different programs for similar activities. Uh, again, if they're, uh, all being effective for very specific groups of students, uh, that's okay. Uh, but if, uh, you're able to focus, uh, and have more consistency in, uh, implementation across the district, you get that consistency between schools. I, it's, it does, uh, um, work towards, uh, targeting students, uh, with very specific needs. I mean, identifying those students that the program uh, is the most, uh, results-oriented for. Um, it can also just help tip the scale, so to speak, uh, in decision-making. This is not particularly easy or simple. Um, if it were, then everybody in the country would be doing it, and it would be, as we say, the secret sauce to uh, uh, selecting which programs to do. Uh, but, uh, you know, by investing the time, the staff time to, uh, do this, uh, certainly, it's a, it's a tool that will definitely help, uh, the district become more efficient, uh, and also increase that student achievement. Uh, so, it also, uh, creates that framework, uh, for, uh, when to add a new program, uh, and a structure to evaluate it uh, going forward after some, uh, initial implementation period. Next slide. So, uh, this graphic, uh, just kind of helps paint the picture of that cycle of budget development, uh, prioritization, uh, and then review, uh, it's a really an iterative cycle to make sure that, uh, when determining how to spend funds, uh, for what particular students and what desired outcomes, that, uh, after it's implemented, it's actually looked at on a, uh, predetermined or scheduled basis, right? So, it could be a three-year plan, uh, two-year, one-year, five-year, really, uh, as long as that's identified upfront with the specific metrics, uh, put in place, uh, it gives everybody involved, um, a, a plan to work to, uh, and a knowledge of what will occur, uh, with the results of that, uh, review after that time is up. So, it, uh, kind of removes those surprises of, you know, why would you cut this program when all of that information is identified upfront in those, you know, years of uh, implementation and analysis? Let's see, next slide. So, for this current year, uh, we applied this thinking, uh, to the discontinuation of the Reading Recovery Program. Uh, now, this wasn't a budget reduction, uh, uh, activity, but a redirection of resources to support students. Uh, but we did include, uh, in the budget process, the, uh, the, the request for information that, uh, uh, folks filled out, it, it was a form to fill out that, that had all of that relevant information. The metrics, the data to be collected, the ability to collect it, uh, how would it be reviewed? The target audience of students, uh, cost associated. And, uh, what would that look like when the program was being implemented? Again, that theory of action that helps, uh, for the program evaluation. Now, uh, as we've reviewed a couple of times already, there aren't, uh, a significant number of uh, additional programs, or any for that matter, uh, that are included, uh, in addition in this budget. Uh, that's kind of up for discussion, um, but it has at least set the groundwork and framework, uh, for how to do this, uh, going forward. It, uh, is, it takes some practice, it takes, uh, some discipline to go through it. Um, we will absolutely continue looking at the programs that are in place from the inventory, the ones that are continuing, uh, and do more work around that evaluation, uh, and review. Uh, and certainly, as we move forward in, uh, revised budgets or future budgets, uh, continue down that path uh, of, uh, requiring, uh, that information to be stated upfront before we go, uh, adopting new things in the budget. So, let's see. Uh, next slide. There we go. Uh, so we have a, a website that's been stood up, uh, to, uh, go through some of this information uh, for the public, uh, to review, uh, and then as programs, uh, go through the process, uh, we'll add those, that information on there, uh, to be able to, to share that out and communicate that out to the public uh, on the, the process, the information, the data, and the decisions that get made. Uh, so it's really transparent, uh, and folks can, uh, understand the, the process and and why a decision gets made, uh, to, um, while it, it won't be absent of, um, the, the nature, uh, political nature isn't quite the right word for it, but that, that, uh, influential, uh, process of, uh, stakeholders speaking up, um, that if there's data and information to support the decision, uh, hopefully, everybody can, and come to an understanding that the right decision was made. So, with that, are there any questions for Jonathan or I?
Well, Tina's not facilitating this, so I think I'll go ahead and start and just say, um, I don't have any questions, but I'm really glad that you're doing this work, because as Rob said in his interview, and I say this a lot, is that we can't keep doing what we're doing and get a different result. So, I think it's great academically, as well as financially, to be looking at what are we spending our money on, and what kind of result are we getting for it? So, thank you.
Any other board members have questions? Looks like Lisa has a question. Lisa?
I don't. I was going to say that I found this really useful. I appreciate the breakdown of how it all works, and I look forward to seeing, uh, what, what we see more of on that website and having ongoing conversations. This has been really useful.
Uh, yeah, I think I'm mostly excited about the website and the transparency and the communication, right? I mean, you know, to, to what Bill was trying to articulate there, you know, when you have people who've committed a long, lots of time and energy to certain programs, um, that they, it is very hard for them to look at those in, in objective ways, right? It's, it's hard for them to sit back and say, gosh, not spent ten years perfecting this, and this doesn't work. Um, there may be something that might be better, right? And so if you don't have the discipline and systems, not only for what you already have to review, but also anything else that comes to the table. Right? You know, you, just because somebody thinks something might work, there's a whole series of questions and commitments that, that we are going to force anybody asking for something new to go through. And I think Bill shared with this, um, during our budget process this year, prior to, um, you know, the COVID hitting, and then the budget really just, um, you know, being a bit of a mess. Um, there was fifty questions that anybody asking for new district investments, um, they had to answer those, right? So, when you do that, you go, uh, into an investment eyes wide open. Here's what it's supposed to do, here's how we'll know if we did it, here's when we're going to measure it, these are the outcomes we're expecting, this is the impact. Um, and then you set up a review in the future, and so there's no debate, oh, in, you know, in two or in three years, we're going to look and evaluate, whether it's a deep evaluation with Jonathan's team, or it's, it's a look more at some quantitative data that we look at. I mean, I just think that this is a difference maker for our district. It sets us apart from other districts. They're not doing this, this type of in-depth work, and it's just work I'm really proud of. So, Tina, you're back, so I'll let you continue to facilitate. Sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know how I did it, but I actually lost my Zoom meeting, so I don't know where it went. Anyway, um, Richard, you had your hand up?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Tina, and thanks Jonathan and, uh, Bill for the presentation. Uh, and Jonathan, and thank you, you know, for breaking it down in terms of the Reading Recovery Program as it relates to uh, the, uh, achievement and, or whatever, uh, goals or gains that the kids have been making and not. I think I understand it better now, because I know I've been after that. Uh, but, and, and, I, I also would like to ask, because I remember, I recall, I don't know when it was, probably three years ago, I, I don't know. Rob, how long have you been on board?
So. It feels like a decade, but only two years. I'm just thinking of my second year.
And I'm trying to recall whether it was, whether you were on board, uh, at that time or not, but I recall Sam, Dr. Messier, presenting the return on investment, and she listed like about eighty, or I don't know, a whole bunch of interventions that the district is currently doing. And, uh, uh, and, and, you know, and we, we ended up doing the first one, I guess, which is Reading Recovery, and the reasons for getting to, uh, uh, look at Reading Recovery as it relates to AROI, uh, cost, results, et cetera. Um, so, I, do, do, do you have a list of those particular interventions that we're going to be looking at, and and what's next? Is that part of the, uh, website that, that you're putting up, or, 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 just give me up, to, get me up to date on that?
Sure, sure. So, so we've done an initiative inventory, and that was completed last year, and that was through our work with District Management Group. Um, and I would say that our team is using the information there to have deeper conversations, which is, is how this Reading Recovery, um, conversation happened. Um, you know, the problem, the challenge is, any new investments we'll put on a schedule, like any new investments that we make, um, as we bring like any new investments that we make, as we bring those to the board for approval, right? And the board has the authority to approve those through the budget process, that, that we will be able to say, look, we're gonna, this is what we think is gonna happen in two or three years. Here's where we think those, the impacts will be. And then we're going to use the initiative inventory as, as we begin to investigate ways to improve as a system and as a district. And not everybody, everything on the inventory is necessarily going to go through a full program recovery or evaluation process. And so we're continuing to refine that, but I'm not sure if we have the initiative inventory or if we're going to have anything on that on the website. I think we identified that specifically to decisions that we make around return on investment. And the initiative inventory is really the first cut of what you look at. So I don't know, Bill, Jonathan, or Randy, if you wanted to respond on what our thoughts are on including that on the website, or is it appropriate? Or what do you all think?
Yeah, from the initiative inventory, so there was the, the range of programs and initiatives that were identified was pretty broad, from very, very small activities that occur in one or a few schools for not much cost, up to these district-wide programs across an entire level, such as reading recovery. So the effort that went into capturing that inventory was a bit of a training exercise to some extent to get practiced with the idea of filling out all that information on things that exist. And also to help give an idea of all the things that were out there, maybe shine a light on some things that were occurring that were harmless, so to speak, but maybe could be stopped without much effort or discussion. There were a number of things back earlier in the presentation Jonathan mentioned, the updating process that we went through. So we updated all the costs associated to get those current as we're going through individual programs now. But just the, the dynamic that occurred with creating the network structure sort of pushed some things out of the way, so to speak. The, the nature of combining those, the curriculum-type folks into the network structure and pulling those budgets together allowed for a process to occur to kind of make decisions on some of the things that were occurring that could just be stopped. Not necessarily large or in-depth, or even really focused on particular student activities. So, I mean, that process kind of happens every year anyway. It's not necessarily this thorough data-driven decision around academic return on investment. The, the decision can just get made because another priority has come up for some reason. So the, the list has been shortened. I would say the website, I guess, more intended to highlight decisions that get made as they're being made, rather than to put a whole list of things out there for general comment or understanding. The, the website is really to help be transparent and communicate around the decision-making process on specific items as they come up.
Yeah, and I would, I would just, just add that, that what we would aim to do is certainly for our biggest ticket programs, our most expensive ones, where we can associate data with those really effectively. I, I would plan to, to, to put some programs on the website that we have information about. Ideally, we would do that in a process that would engage stakeholders at certain points on the way. So, so that in a sort of, in the spirit of people seeing the data before it's right out there in public, whenever that's possible. We, we'd aim in that, that way, but I think there's a, there's a middle ground to say that we would only put data on after something has happened to say, we'll summarize what we need to know about our most expensive, biggest ticket and biggest impact programs. It just, there, we would, we wouldn't try to do that for every single thing that we do. Like my favorite, favorite example is elementary honor choir, right? It doesn't cost very, 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 very much. We probably don't want an evaluation of that in some manner and putting it on the website. But there are a bunch of, there, there's, it's a big list. We would focus, I think, on the biggest ticket items first.
And I'll just mention one other thing, which is just the idea that I don't think that we want this to be a morgue for things that we killed either, that our hope would be that we also celebrate things that we've evaluated and see that there's great value that we want to replicate too, so that there's sort of a mix between, you know, positive and negative. And I know that typically you all always want to kind of know how to get there as well. And so if you go under current topics, that's a good way to get there.
Thank you all. The follow-up, the when we're looking at academic return on investment, the fundamental reason for all of this is close achievement gap. And not, and if, and if it is, let's say that that's why we're doing all of this. The, so all programming that is, well, let me, let me put it this way. Is there, is there like a sunset in terms of, will there be a sunset in terms of new programs will be implemented? And when they will be evaluated based on return on investment?
Yeah, yeah. So that's the, what Bill referred to in the presentation, is that any new investment that comes in through the budgeting process, which it has to, right? Is that, is that it'll be subject to those questions, so we know and understand how long do we want to give for implementation, right? If board members of you'll remember, last year, we talked about the implementation of the literacy materials, right? The, the board allocated a huge investment in, and the first thing that we looked at was, is it being implemented appropriately, right? Like this concerns-based, is CBAM concerned, do I have that right, Jonathan? So, so the first thing you measure is, are we doing it right? Right? Because if you buy something and you don't do it right, and you're upset that it doesn't work, that's your fault. You didn't do it right. Like, so are we doing it right? And then, once you establish you're doing it right, then to what, at what point can you expect teachers to be operating with the right level of expertise to get the results? That the research would show that a program that we purchased that creates, right? And so just depending upon the, the investment, Richard, you can expect to have, be able to ask those different types of questions. So for example, next year, but you know, budget willing, we have some programs, we have the money to do some new programs. You'd be able to ask, Rob, how long do we think it's going to take for this to work? How much are we investing? When, when will we be able to see this back to the board through our return on investment process to see what's up? And then we should be able to answer that. And that type of system empowers board members to have a better sense of what's going on and when things are going to get reviewed and why we're investing in certain things. And also a set, an assurance that if we're investing in things that aren't working to the extent where we think they are, A, you're going to know about it because this is a public transparent process. And B, you'll be empowered to act on any, any staff recommendations moving forward with that. So through budgeting, and so, so I do, I just am really excited about this whole process.
That, now, I know that we invested a whole lot of money on the elementary counseling program. And is that on the list to be looked at in terms of AROII?
You know, I don't know that when, when that decision was made from the board that there were any set or intended outcomes. Or if it was just goodness gracious, this is a minimum standard that we think all kids should have, right? And if that, and I believe that's what was, what was the case. And so just having the counselors and making sure that those vacancies are filled and having good evaluations in those people would be the, you know, the extent of the evaluation there. But, but we don't have a set of criteria, like we didn't bring in elementary counselors to reduce discipline or there wasn't any indicators or data that I know of that, that were guaranteed or were suggested when that investment was made. But I would turn to Jonathan and Bill, that might, that was before this work, or board members who were on the board at the time, to share kind of what those outcomes might have looked like.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I think we did actually talk about some outcomes and we got a report. I think some metrics were given to the board after the first year of implementation. I can't remember what they were offhand, but
I was gonna ask, what were they at? Because I don't remember that.
Yeah, it was, it might have been a while ago. I'm trying to think. It's a three-year-old program, so. But we did get something.
Yeah, I, I would, I would need to look and, look and see. I think in the first year, we may have had a few sites that were gathering data as part of one of the other grants they were involved in. But I, but I couldn't say, say what, 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 what those are. We'll, we'll, we'll take, take, take that as an RFI to look, look for the, the past report that was made. But as far as there being specific outcomes, we, we've not essentially had measures of things like social emotional health. So we don't, we don't have a before and after measurement that we could make that way. And given some autonomy and discipline records and how that's, that's, that's done and changes in practice over time. There, we're, you know, I, I, there, there, there isn't, there probably isn't at this point a good, strong evaluation of a before and after comparison to be made. But we could certainly ask questions about, well, what are the objective, what are the things we hope, hope to accomplish in that?
Right, and to, to comment on academic return on investment, and it doesn't necessarily need to be just kind of academic in the strictest sense. It can be those social, emotional activity or outcomes, is you have something to compare it to. And so it's not elementary counselors or elementary social workers. That would be a comparison to make versus you have elementary counselors or you don't have elementary counselors. And what is the comparison there? And again, also wrapped into that implementation and effectiveness, and are you getting the outcomes that you expected? So the, the return on investment side is really about comparison of, is something more effective than something else? That something else could be nothing, but now that we have elementary counselors in all our schools, it's not really a comparison of one versus the other. There's no other to compare it to.
Don't let my question think that I'm against elementary counselors, because I'm not. I just want to know what we're doing and how we're doing it, because I know there was a lot of public comment. And one of the reasons why we have elementary counselors is because a lot of the people wanted elementary counselors in their systems due to the fact that secretaries, et cetera, were doing the counseling work in some of the elementary schools. I remember those things, but, but I just want to make sure that, that it's a good investment that we're making, okay? As we're doing with the, the reading recovery programs, et cetera. Then, you know, when I look at the reading recovery program, I think one of the comparisons on that reading recovery program, if I was misreading what I was reading, was Orton Gillingham. Was that, is that, is that correct? Was I, was that the comparison that you were making in terms of costs and all of that?
So, so what I would say is Orton Gillingham was, was on, was on, was on the same list of interventions. And, and, and that while one can make comparisons in terms of they're, they're all on the same list, they all have costs, they all have outcomes. I, I wouldn't compare reading recovery with Orton Gillingham, except in the case where we know that a particular student fits the profile of either program, right? So, so I, I don't, I don't have enough data to compare students who did Orton Gillingham, which is more recent, to reading recovery students in the same timeframe to, to, to make that comparison. But we, we, we did certainly see pretty positive outcomes for that group of students that, that, that year with, with Orton Gillingham. So if, if, if all things were equal and we could assign a person to any one of these and they would all work equally well, we would absolutely pick the cheapest thing with the best outcome and we would do more of that. What we hope to learn over time as we did, did, do this is matching up students really well in terms of the programs that they would get. There was a time where we, we didn't offer Orton Gillingham broadly, so that, that option wasn't there in the same way. So our, our hope as we do this over time is we're going to get better and better at it. We're going to use resources more effectively. We're going to get kids more quickly to the outcomes that, that they, they can achieve by matching them up with exactly what they ought to get.
And this is my last question, Tina, and I'll be quiet for a while. The, the reading recovery program, I know you saw that it was reaching like about 80 students or something like that. And the, the cost is pretty high, $8,000 a student. And we got rid of it. Now, when you're looking at reading recovery, I mean, when you're looking at return on investment and you see something that's, eh, maybe it's too costly or it's not working, is there any thought processes in terms of, okay, if we get rid of this, what will take place, what will replace it?
So, so as far as the, the, who would do the thinking on that, it would be the, 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 the administrators in charge of that area. What, given their array of tools that we, that we have, I think there's a pretty good, good indication that we can meet kids' needs well with either Orton Gillingham or LLI or other possibilities that I, that I believe are being planned for, looked at. But, but what we, what we, what we have now that we didn't have when we first began doing reading recovery to my knowledge is we have pensionists who have a more complete tool belt of, of strategies they can, they can choose. And that the, and that the hope is that that in combination with some other changes that we've made as far as giving classroom teachers a broader, we have materials kindergarten, first and second, now including funded stations, that we do have more tools to meet kids' needs. So I'm, I'm hopeful that what we'll see when, when we look at the, the same kind of data at the end of next year, hoping that we have a year that, that we can measure in effectively because we've been in school a lot. What I'm hoping that we'll see is we'll see that there have been very positive outcomes, including for the profile of a first grader who would have in the past potentially been identified for reading recovery at one of the schools that, that was able to offer that.
Okay. And Richard, never say, I'll, I'll stop asking questions now.
I won't, because I got a follow-up, okay? Then
Yeah, there you go.
So, so you're not, you're not suggesting that Orton Gillingham would be the replacement for reading recovery, are you?
So what I would say, Richard, is if, I can certainly get, get you connected with Michelle Quasi and Margaret Crespo. I know Margaret's on the call, and they can talk to you in more detail in regards to the options of what we're going to do with that repurposed resource. I think it's around $600,000 in people's time. And so, so we, let, let me follow up with you, and I can get somebody to give a follow-up call to get you the answers.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, Rob, what do we have next? How much more have we got?
Well, next, we have an update on our partnerships initiative, strategic initiative 5A. And Arlie Hussman will be joining us to give a brief update on that. And then that will be it, board members. And so, Arlie, take it away.
But can we just take a five-minute break? Board members asked for a five-minute break.
Sure thing, no problem.
Thanks.
Thanks again for the opportunity to, to share with you the ongoing work to build and manage partnerships across our district. And this dovetails really nicely with the introduction that Robin made to her presentation in that our business partnerships really help define the why behind our educational topics. So to start this off, we just recently, of course, saw a, how our community can come together in ways that we never imagined. And we, we have an incredibly strong community. This is just one simple example, but it shows what we're capable of doing. And as we know, we didn't do this alone, BDSMD. We were led in, in this particular venture by the fundraising work of Impact on Education and which really helped support the, the work that our, our district team was, was taking on. So the question with this particular initiative is how do we bring this kind of strength and energy into our classrooms? We have two strategic plan initiatives are created. We have two strategic plan initiatives are created to make those connections more seamless. We're going to talk about one of those today. And then the next slide, really, one of the biggest reasons why we're taking this on, we know this is so important, is that teachers really want to build these relationships outside of their schools. But as we all know, they do not have time to do this, to go out and find the partners and cultivate those, those relationships. And when we talk and look at, talk to our business partners and look at what they can do, they have a tremendous amount to offer, of course, the subject matter expertise, work-based learning experiences for our students, resources, that could be equipment, funding, et cetera. But they're unsure about how to connect with the district. And so this was the fundamental reason why, and see the next slide, the, we, we started up these, these two initiatives. 5A is specifically what we're talking about today, which is establishing a system for strategically managing existing partnerships and building the new ones. And that leads us into 5B, which work will be starting soon, which provides the access to and support from community partnerships to make sure that every student is able to make an informed decision about their next steps. So the, when the team came together, and we'll look at the next slide, we wanted to learn from what other districts were doing across our state. There's a lot of this that's been implemented. We know we're not breaking trail here. So we talked to and visited districts ranging from Pooter up in the Fort Collins area down to Cherry Creek. There's a picture from, from our visit to the Cherry Creek Innovation Campus. What we found, of course, is that these districts learned a tremendous amount and they were very willing to share what, what worked, what didn't, and give us some guidance on which way to go. And in the next slide, we'll see that one of the things that came up with regard to this is based on this research, the initiative, partnerships initiative team identified the need for a director of strategic partnerships. And we developed a, a job description around this. This particular position was consistent across every other district that we talked to. Now, of course, the hiring freeze has affected the implementation of this. We may be able to revisit this once the, the freeze ends and we're a little clearer on, on what our budgetary constraints may be. So moving on, we do have a very strong partner network right now. One particular group of which I sit on is called the Boulder County Talent Collaborative. This includes, as you can see on the screen, the Boulder Chamber, which provides a direct connection to the city chambers across our, our county from Ned up in the mountains all the way out to Erie. And we also working with St. Brain, with our higher ed partner, Front Range, Colorado Department of Labor, Employment, Workforce, Boulder County. We're wanting to expand and working hard to add the Brumfield Chamber into that group. And we would very much like to bring C Boulder into this as well. So that we are really talking about a, a, a broad, broad spectrum, about everything that we can imagine connecting with in our particular county. What this will allow us to do is to build a network system. And back in February, this group, the Talent Collaborative, began working to develop this cross-agency system. This will be able to provide seamless, if you will, cradle to career or preschool to PhD support for individual students, bringing together all facets of our amazingly strong community. The system will connect teacher and student needs with business opportunities and vice versa. We know that those, those work-based opportunities for students in any different area can be met with a variety of different business partners in our particular county. So while the work on defining the system is certainly ongoing, undoubtedly not a surprise to anyone that this spring businesses have put a hold on working in this kind of partnership with, with us. The businesses are absolutely adamant that they will soon restart these collaborative efforts for a couple of different reasons. They know, they definitely want to be supporting our community efforts and see the need there. And not completely altruistically, of course, they want to help grow the next generation of people who will be working in their companies. So next slide shows that even giving these, this current challenge that we're in the middle of, we have a couple of, of great examples to share of work that's already happening. This first one you're seeing called Bridge the Gap is a partnership between us, Boulder Valley, Boulder, sorry, Boulder County Housing and Human Services, Boulder County Public Health and Boulder County Community Services to share information that's needed to support all students. So this case is one where we've come together to help break down silos that may exist between local agencies, which those silos can result in challenges in really providing the support to families, students and families that they may need. This comprehensive approach will help more students be successful, both in their educational work and families be successful in just surviving in these tough times. The second example that I have is, is the Geometry and Construction Program at Brumfield High School. In this particular program, students are collaborating directly with Habitat for Humanity to construct a house. And it's happening onsite. So if you haven't driven by Brumfield High School in a while, if you can get out and, and stretch your legs a little bit, I would suggest that you take a look. Because this house will be moved down to a site in Denver. And Randy's put, team has put together a little video describing this.
We're doing what's called a barn raise.
Today we started building the house.
We lift up all the walls. Now it's actually starting to look like a house.
This will be moved down to Denver, somewhere in Denver with Habitat.
I'm having a blast.
Been pretty exciting for the kids and for us.
They basically learn geometry and build a house with what we learned from geometry.
It's been a lot more interesting than sitting in a boring math class for an hour. We were about a month in, we actually started building the walls and we required some of that geometry stuff in order to make the walls.
So it's kind of neat to do it in the classroom and then come back outside and do it in real life.
If you could see on the thing, there's actually a little base. We made that.
It's all contextual. That's how it changes it up completely. I mean, you look at, you look at our, our, our walls and you see parallel lines everywhere.
Had to square it up, which we actually used a little simple math thing that I believe it's two by one equals a three, which makes a perfect right angle. So we just did that.
Well, you know, I'm old enough that, yeah, you had to know all the axioms and theorems when I was in high school. To me, it's more important that they understand the concepts than be able to tell me what their names are.
That these kinds of jobs pay really well.
There is a big shortage in framers and this type of stuff that we've just done today out in the world right now in Denver. Huge numbers. And these kids could actually go out right now and get a job.
So if they get some experience like this and they like it, then they can have something like this on their transcript. It could be easier to get a job like that.
Real powerful way to help kids get fired up about the trades and actually learn the math.
And how does it feel when you look out there and you see that?
Proud. It's absolutely amazing to see everything up.
After all the couple of months of just doing stuff and banging nails, we actually have a house.
It feels amazing.
So as you saw in the video there, the students are amazing and doing amazing work. They're extremely proud of their accomplishments. And the connection to the community partner is obviously very important to them. They, they're doing something that's worthwhile and they, and they know it. The, one of the big takeaways from this is that we wouldn't possibly be able to do this without direct involvement from, with Habitat for Humanity. So that partnership is, is of utmost importance. This is what the house looks like now. As you can imagine, the last couple of months of school year, students weren't able to get back out there, but they, they did an amazing job getting to the point they, they did. And that'll be, that'll be getting finished and, and moved down to Denver shortly. So those two examples really show what is already being done on a, on a small scale. The outcome of these initiatives will allow us to really scale this up so that students are, are accessing and benefiting from our partners that work in places that are far, far away from our current neighborhoods, as this next slide will show you. So we are truly looking at enabling our students to, to shoot for the stars, literally. So at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, great. Should we start with Stacy?
Thanks for that, Ari, Arlie. I don't really have any questions right now. It looks like we're heading in the right direction as far as, as far as partnerships are going. So, so thank you for that.
Okay, Richard.
Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. I don't know, it seemed like it was like probably during my first term, we talked about this whole concept of community partnerships and, and at that time, you know, I was thinking a little bit differently than what you presented today. And maybe, maybe that's where you're heading to. And I saw that you did have Habitat for Humanities, et cetera, in terms of a nonprofit out in the community. But there are a lot of nonprofits in the community that work specifically with some of the students that really need support. And I know that, that we need to get some of those nonprofits to help us, help the school district. Richard's on objectives in terms of closing the achievement gap, especially with our gap kids. And I'm thinking, you know, in terms of local nonprofits, there's a number of them. And at one time, we were even thinking about, if we had some money to spend, maybe we could set aside like $500,000 or something like that to support some of these particular nonprofits that do the work in these areas with our most at-risk children and help them, help us, the school district, in terms of closing achievement gaps. And I guess my question is, in your, in your conversations, in your discussions, has that come up? Is that something that you're looking at? Or is that just an expectation that I have that maybe nobody else has?
It is, it has absolutely come up. When we, when we say partnerships, you know, we, we definitely want to be all-inclusive there and realizing that so many, there's such a diversity in, in the partners and what they might be able to, to help us do in the district to help support us. One of the, one of the next steps that the, the initiative team has recommended is that we, we actually do an inventory, both of, from the, the school perspective in the partnerships that are already in existence and seeing what, what we can do there. But, but also looking from, from the other side, looking from the, the community, just like you're talking about, and trying to define what, what partnerships we already have, where they might be able to expand. Is it really limited now? But, but they might have the capacity and we might have the capacity to, to broaden that access across multiple schools of the entire district. So that is absolutely one of the next steps that we are, that we will be undertaking is identifying that.
Can I jump into the comment about that? I think what we talked about is a board and I think this is something that, I'm just trying to think when this came up and it was with, I know it was Shelley, Donna and Richard. So I guess it was before Stacy or Lisa. And this was this idea, it would be a board-directed fund of money that would be put aside and it wouldn't be district-directed. And we did actually vote on that. We voted not to do a board-directed fund to finance nonprofits in the community. So from, so it would be just helpful as we, you know, walk or sort of consider these things, just to be clear on whether you think this would be at the district's discretion or a separate endeavor by the board. Because I think it's important to make that difference. And, and we did, it would be something we'd have to vote on because it would be a different way of allocating money through the budget process that would be going straight from the board, not with district recommendations. And then there's, there's also this idea of whether, and this will be my question, whether we would work through an RFP process for services provided by nonprofits so that there's a fair and transparent way for nonprofits to get access because there are a lot of nonprofits in our community, or whether it will be done in a different way. So, because this board has talked a lot about this topic. So, and I, and there's a lot of history here, I think. So, anyway, Richard, is that kind of what you were thinking of, the, those conversations?
Yeah, thanks a lot, Tina, but I can't recall whether we voted on that or not, but, but thank you.
I think we did, yeah. But it, that was a long time ago. I think it was three or four years ago. Richard, do you have more questions? No, okay.
Sorry, I muted myself. No, just that, and, 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 yeah, I'd be interested to hear the response in terms of your, the way you asked it.
Okay, Lisa?
I don't think I have any questions. I'm always excited when we talk about nonprofit partnerships and community partnerships generally. So I, I was interested in the presentation. I'm looking forward to hearing more as we move forward and also to finishing our tour one day, which we got cut short via COVID halfway through.
Absolutely, you're welcome anytime.
Okay, Kitty?
Sorry, I clicked the wrong button. So we saw a picture of that house at Brumfield, how it was once schools closed down. Is that right, what that was? So are the kids finishing it or how's it being finished?
Right now, it's, the, the, the work is being done by Habitat, I believe that's correct. Actually, Ginger may actually know the very specific information on this. The idea is, it's unfortunate. And, and of course, we wanted the students to be able to, to complete the, all the work. The, the hope is that things will open up enough that once the, the house is moved, that the, the, the students could be able to be part of that process and being down there to actually install that. So we're, we're still hopeful that, that at least that, that could happen.
Yeah, I know, I went and saw it and I think Lisa was with me and maybe Kathy. But it was such a great project and the kids were so proud of it. And so it just kind of breaks my heart that they didn't get to see it through. But we couldn't help the, the virus.
Okay. Well, and I already asked my question, just in terms of how the relationships might work with nonprofits, whether there would be an RFP service and what, if there'd be a standard contract that would be done so that we're clear about liability, screening of people who are interacting with our students and all of that kind of stuff, so. And you don't have to answer today.
We could certainly get back to you back, Tina.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, is there anything else, Rob?
I, I want to just thank our team, board members. And, and for those watching in the public, you can see that our team has been hard at work, focusing our efforts to make sure that we're all together for all students. Board members, I appreciate your patience. Senator, this was a long presentation, almost three hours. But it's important to make sure that you are all updated on the work that's happening. A lot of changes, a lot of positive changes, I think, that you were able to see today on how we're going to change the systems to support all kids. So very proud of where we're at. The good news is, as we start next year, we will maintain these six strategic initiatives. And board members, as we'll be talking about later in our prioritization meeting, we'll be adding five new ones in phase two. Lots of, lots of really exciting work, I think, are happening, is happening at the district level to better support kids, their schools, their teachers and their parents. And so I'm just really proud of where we are and the fact that our teams have And so I'm just really proud of where we are and the fact that our teams have fought through really just unprecedented conditions with this pandemic to keep doing the work that's the right work for our system. So I want to thank you and just very proud of our team. Want to thank them as well.
Okay, so we'll get back together at 5:00 PM. Do I have that right? All right. See y'all later.